Good evening. Welcome to the December 10th, 2024 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk, please take the role.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Flom?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Mugawar?
Here.
We have seven present.
Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Councilmember Nichols.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
And tonight, we have students from Lourdes Academy Elementary and Middle School. Here tonight, we've got Megan Martin and Grace Martin, both from Lourdes. So ladies, if you wouldn't mind joining me up front here. Lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very well done, ladies. Thank you very much for being here tonight, helping us, leading us in the pledge tonight. Again, we have Megan and we have Grace Martin. So going to give you a chance to tell us maybe who your teacher is at Lourdes and maybe if you have a favorite class.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Kasha.
Yeah. And what class is that?
Basically, all my classes.
All right, Grace. I know you're in middle school. Do you have a favorite class or a teacher you want to give a shout out to? Go ahead and take it.
Mrs. Wopat is my favorite teacher.
Nice. And both basketball players and the Martin family here as well. Ladies, thank you very much for being here again. That's for you. Of course.
Hi.
Good. Thank you again. Have a great night.
Thanks.
All right. I'll give them a second. So next up would be proclamations. We didn't issue any proclamations, but we're going to go a little off script here tonight. So tonight happens to be City Manager Mark Roloff's last official Tuesday night council meeting of his long career. And so tonight, we've got a few things for him that we'd like to present to him and to say thank you. So we have State Representative Lori Palmieri, who previously was not only councilmember but mayor for quite a few years here in Oshkosh. She has something. And then we've got a few other just little things to say thank you for your time here in Oshkosh.
Technically, it's not listed on the agenda, so I don't know.
I also remember hearing slightly before the meeting that the city attorney did maybe reference that I could do whatever I wanted. So I'm going to hold them to that for one time on camera. So if you wouldn't mind, maybe Mark, if you want to come down. Actually, you can do it wherever you want.
You know the drill.
Oh, yeah.
Well, first of all, my name's Lori Palmieri. I'm the state representative here in District 54. And yes, I served almost eight years, close to eight years, half of the time that City Manager Mark Roloff has been here with us. And I remember the first time I ever came and this dais seemed so intimidating and so large. I came to speak when I was a student at UW Fox. And now here we are, all these years later. And it's my honor this evening to present City Manager Mark Roloff with a citation by the state legislature, "Know you by these presents." Whereas, thank you. Mark Roloff began his service to the state of Wisconsin in 1992, when he became the city administrator for the city of Berlin, Wisconsin. And whereas Roloff gained experience in California and Colorado before his move to Wisconsin in a variety of positions, including management analyst, assistant administrative analyst, administrative analyst, senior budget analyst, and deputy city manager. And whereas Roloff accepted his current position as city manager with the city of Oshkosh in 2008, which by the way, is the year that I moved here. So I brought something good. I'm going to take credit. Whereas Mark Roloff has served as chief executive to one of Wisconsin's largest cities and ensured effective and efficient delivery of services to meet the needs of the community. And whereas, in addition to his time spent serving local government, Roloff has also served as a member of the adjunct faculty in the Masters of Public Administration Program at the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh since 1999, and as a member of the advisory board for the Whitburn Center for Governance and Policy Research. And whereas Roloff sat on a various International City County Management Association committees, participates in the Center for Performance Management, I'm sorry, Performance Measurement. It is also an active member in the coaching program. And whereas, he currently serves on the Board of Directors for the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance, and other nonprofit boards in the Oshkosh area, as well as serving as the vice president for the Wisconsin Urban Alliance. And whereas Roloff was instrumental in a recent change to Wisconsin's Shared Revenue Program by helping us to hold together the coalition of state, town, city, village, and county governments that facilitated the largest increase in state support of local governments in Wisconsin history. And therefore, I, Representative Lori Palmieri, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Legislature hereby recognize Mark Roloff for his over 40 years of service to the state of Wisconsin and the city of Oshkosh, and wish him the best in his next adventure.
Thanks so much, Lori. Really appreciate it.
I've learned so much from you, and I miss our breakfast and our coffees. I'd have more of those.
I'll have time.
Make him pay.
Thank you.
I'm going to steal that back from you for a second or two, right? So we also had the privilege of getting a certificate of commendation from the governor's office. Governor Tony Evers also issued a commendation for Mark Roloff. Many of the same language that State Representative Paul Mary pointed out, pointing out to Mark's long career here, not only the state of Wisconsin, but his leadership here within the city of Oshkosh, as well as the, between the league and the urban alliance and all the other professional services, professional organizations that Mark's been a part of. And I'm really glad that Lori pointed out, one of her final bullet points was Mark's work on the state shared revenue initiative, just in the last biennial budget. It's something when you get a chance to help spend a billion dollars. And so that, it's a legacy type thing. And I know here, it meant two million dollars more annually, but to townships and cities and counties all over the state, your work was instrumental in that. And the governor helps commend you on your service here of a lifetime of public service. There's that one for you. Yeah, stack them up. I got, I got two other things for you. But first, we have typically when a council, when a council member, council member's term is up, they get a plaque of commemoration of their, of their service. And thought it was very appropriate to also give an appreciation award to City Manager Mark Roloff, given in his grateful recognition, given in our grateful recognition of your extending service as city manager from 2008 to 2029. And this is issued on behalf of the Oshkosh City Council. So that's going on the, that's going on the wall for the next gig, or above the mantle. Looks really nice for that, too. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Very much.
I don't get to get these out too often, so I do have a few, a few quick words here for Mark and then one last thing for him. On behalf of the entire Oshkosh community, I'd like to extend my heartfelt congratulations to you on your retirement. This is a well-deserved milestone, and I want to take a moment to express my deepest appreciation for your exceptional leadership, dedication, and service that you've provided to our city throughout your career. As our city manager, you've overseen numerous initiatives that have not only enhanced the quality of life for our residents, but it also helped shape the future of our city. Your tireless work ethic, your commitment to public service, and your ability to navigate complex challenges have been a true asset to this community. You've helped guide us through both growth and change, always keeping the best interests of our citizens at the forefront. Your legacy will be felt for years to come in the projects, the policies, and the partnerships that you've built. You set a standard of excellence that will be very difficult to match, and you leave behind a city that is stronger and more resilient because of you and your leadership. As you enter this next chapter, I hope you take great pride in all that you have accomplished, and you will be greatly missed by the common council, the staff, and all those who've had the pleasure of working with you. I can without a doubt say, yeah, without a doubt, say that you are leaving Oshkosh in a better place than when you started. I want to thank you for your tireless service, tireless and selfless service to this community. On behalf of the city council, I issue Mark a key to the city. I'm not sure exactly what door it opens, but he's got it. And I really appreciate having gotten the chance to know you over my last seven years on council and all your leadership here, and wish you nothing but the best.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
I really don't want to say much because I'll start crying. It's been an honor to serve this, I'll get it out of my system. It's been an honor to serve this community. Great elected officials, great staff, and just a great community. We're going to stay here in Oshkosh because we love it here. We chose to come to Oshkosh, but Oshkosh is making us stay. So I want to thank you, appreciate the recognition, appreciate the fact that these do double as bottle openers, and so I'll be making use of this. Don't tell me Jackie Chalice told me that. I didn't do that myself. But I do appreciate the recognitions and everything. I don't know if I'm going to, where I'm going to put all this stuff now, because I got a bunch of stuff I got to take off the wall in the next week. But it's been a pleasure and an honor. And I won't be coming on Tuesday, every other Tuesday to come and yell at you or anything. I'll just, I'll just let that be for other people. But appreciate all the work that councils do to serve our community. They don't get enough recognition, and they also don't get to pay for it. So, and I've been able to have a great career culminating here in Oshkosh, and I want to thank you for the honor.
Congratulations, Martin.
Thanks, Matt.
I don't know if any other councilmembers wanted, but the floor will be yours if you wanted. Otherwise, we can. Councilmember Esslinger, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As Assemblyman Paul Mary said, Mr. Roloff, back in 2008, we had one city manager leave, and we had many, many candidates, good candidates for this position. And I remember in a lot of meetings, we went over, obviously, everyone's credentials, and you rose to the top. And 40 years of doing this, I don't know how you did it, but that's a testament, I think, to the person that you are, dedicated individual. And I'm going to, I'm going to miss you. I really am. I'm about as good at this as you are.
You missed me so much you came back to council.
But no, seriously, I mean, I enjoyed the times that we had. You know, we disagreed sometimes, and that's okay, too. Enjoyed the time we went out to GAA together to talk to the Chinese people a little bit. That was fun. So, you know, whatever you're going to get involved with next, you got my best wishes, and I'm sure the rest of the council. And then the last thing I just want to say is I do want to let you know that there are vacancies on boards and commissions. If you want to get involved in that, I'll give you a recommendation if you need that.
That's great.
Thank you.
I'll take over.
I appreciate that plug for the board and commission, Paul. That was, that was good. I like that. Well, with that, again, thank you to City Manager Roloff, and appreciate Representative Paul Mary for being here tonight to help us acknowledge the career and the service. With that, we'll move on. I don't have anyone registered for citizens.
I thought it was going to get excuse for the rest of the meeting.
Nope, nope, nope. This one, we may drag it out a little longer just to keep you for a few extra minutes. I have no one registered to speak to the council for citizen statements. If there is anybody who wants to speak, now is your time. Otherwise, we'll move on to consent agenda. So moving on to consent, I also have no one registered to speak on that, so I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on any consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none. If you'll take the role on consent agenda.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
First up, we have pending ordinances. We have a few of them. All these will be taking action on, I think we have seven of them here. Ordinance 24665, approved request to annex to the city from the town of Oshkosh, 4434 Island View Drive. Planning Commission recommends approval. I can take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 665? Please take the role when ready.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
24-666, amend section 27A-11 in the municipal code to update parking regulations on South Main Street between the Fox River and West 9th Avenue. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Motion in a second, please.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Please take the role on 24666.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
Ordinance 24-667, amend section 27A-11 in the municipal code to extend no parking regulations on the west side of Dove Street. Transportation Committee recommends approval. Take a motion in a second, please.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Please take the role on 667.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
Moving right along, we have ordinance 24-668, amend section 27-14 of the municipal code, truck routes designated. Transportation Committee recommends approval. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Please take the role.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
Ordinance 24-669, amend section 27-35 in appendix 27B of the Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to parking regulations within city-owned parking lots in relation to the construction of new East 9th Avenue parking lot. Transportation Committee recommends approval. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move it. Second.
Any discussion? Please take the role.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven?
Next up, ordinance 24-670, amend portions of Chapter 4 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to alcoholic beverages, alcoholic beverages license investigations, granting, and issuance of premise and operator licenses.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I have a question first, I think, for the city attorney. I believe at the last meeting when we discussed this ordinance, there is a part two of this that we're expecting. Is that right, related to zoning?
Yes, there's a, there are some new classifications in the new liquor license that are not, are not found currently in our zoning code. So there's a process involved to involve the planning commission and the council as to what are the appropriate zones for these new establishments.
Appreciate that.
And if, I could say, I apologize for interrupting. For everyone's benefit, I know I did watch, I wasn't at the last meeting, I did watch it. And I know City Attorney Lawrence and referred to some outside help we've been getting. And I would just say, for the council's benefit, Attorney Colin Schaefer is available via Zoom right now. He, if you have any questions, he's with the law firm of Ogden, Glazer, and Schaefer. He's coming to us from their Cedarburg office. They also have, we have an office in Madison and Minneapolis. And Attorney Lawrence and was referencing, he's very helpful because their practice is almost entirely representing breweries and distilleries, licensees, and similar entrepreneurs. So we wanted to make sure, A, we got good information from him, and then B, we were also wanted to make sure that as we deal with our liquor code, we weren't creating any obstacles or obstructions for people like Colin who may be on the other side of the counter. So anyway, I just wanted to, I didn't mean to interrupt, but he's available. I think you saw some, a person on the screen before the meeting, and if you're wondering who that was, that was him. So he's available for any questions.
That, that's very helpful. I guess, just so that we don't go too far out of order, I intend to move to lay this over until the zoning ordinances are, we're able to review those as well in conjunction with this. But I don't want to do that if people have questions for, for the attorney on the screen.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Nichols. Anybody want to make any other comments or discussion before any motions to? I don't see any.
I'll second the motion to layover.
You want to make your?
I'll make it because I'm going to do my thing that I always do.
Let's do your specific motion first.
As you imagine, yeah. So I'll move to lay this over until the date at which we get the zoning changes related to the liquor licensing. But, but like I typically do, I'd like to request a memo to specify exactly what we're doing, why. Maybe the attorney that has helped us do this can help put that together. The other thing I'd like to know, because I know there's been conversations back and forth, but how many liquor license do we have, and how do we anticipate this affecting issuing those liquor licenses? And so I'd like to see that memo in conjunction with both of those ordinances.
Now, Chris, if you want to do that second thing, you could.
I'll second that.
There you go. So we have a.
For clarity, how, the question is how will what affect? Will the layover affect, or will something else affect it? Just?
Great question. How this, this ordinance that we're, that I just moved to layover, in addition to the zoning ordinance that we have yet to see, how will that affect unissued and/or reissued once we get, once we get to that point from today's practices?
So by reissued, renewed, like in July, is that what we're talking about?
Renewed, or if we have people forfeit them, or they, they are voided for whatever reason, we have them to reissue later. Basically, any liquor licenses issued from here forward, how, how does this change that process? You're asking like the total number, right? Like how that? Yep. How those are divvied out?
Okay.
Yeah. And we can talk more about the memo after the fact, but.
That's fine. And we can come back and watch the video of what you just said.
Great.
To make sure we get it right.
And I'm just, you know, for clarifying purposes, because I know some of the issues that I heard going around were, one, for new licensees, and those are going to be very few and far between. Those will be, the numbers won't be that big. So just to highlight what that will be.
Yeah.
And then the, the key words in that other part of that section were, if, if there are changes or something like that. So if there are changes, that would be substantive. That'll probably be a little tougher, but I think we can probably project on what we think that would be. And I think that's, I think to just give some idea to staff of what I think you're looking for, I.
That's exactly right. I just want to understand what the impact is. I want to make sure Oshkosh remains an easy place to do business, including for people that have liquor licenses issued. So we can look at them with a straight face and say, this is what changed, and this is why, and this is how it's going to affect you.
Okay. Councilmember Larson, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was going to add to some of that and maybe offer a friendly amendment to it. I think we'll all, so I'm not going to go back into how much I dislike what was proposed, because we went over that last time. I'm not going to waste all your time again. You've seen emails from me about it. But I don't like any of what was proposed so far. And there's more in it than just zoning change. There is. I mean, we'll get into that later. So I was going to reference back to last spring, all of us up here with consensus said we should have a discussion going forward about how we issue liquor licenses. There's a few things we'd like to change, and we asked for that to be an open book. We asked to have the conversation. That never happened. And instead, what we got was this. So maybe DJ, if you're, if you're able to amend that a little bit, the memo part of what you're asking for is great, but if we can have more of an open conversation about what we're doing and why, and include some of those things that we talked about last April in this, that would also be beneficial. Then we can make sure we're all doing the right step moving forward. How do you want to phrase that? I have no idea, but you're good at this.
Yeah, well, I'd look, would we request a workshop later?
So.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, a couple parts there, a couple, a couple things I'll try to help clear up a little bit. One, no friendly amendments. We'd fully amend or not. Two, I think stating it right here and right now as part of this discussion, they're hearing us, and it's part of the record. But two, the other part is, you know, later on, the future agenda items would be a great spot to also just put it on the, we want this as a future agenda topic. It doesn't have to, in my opinion, it doesn't have to be tied together, but yes, all these things are intrinsically intertwined a little bit.
Sure. Yep.
Those are my thoughts on that. I don't know that we have to, in my opinion, I don't think you need to tie that to the motion to layover, but I understand the intent.
Yeah.
And I think as long as we're very clear on our intent right now, that when this comes back, we want to have this a broader discussion, is what I'm hearing from, I think, my colleagues.
And I heard DJ use the word workshop, which I think is probably.
Appropriate.
A, a good approach this, because you're going to want some free-flowing discussion on this thing.
I was, that was the other part, was that a free-flowing exchange instead of, this is, this is a structured environment. I think it's probably best for once, and maybe even before that, maybe before the zoning change that, that they were referring to in the amendment comes back, it may be appropriate to actually meet in a workshop. And they do that in planning commission a lot, right? We do a workshop to understand more, exchange ideas, and learn more before we get to the meat of it. That, that may be appropriate.
That'd be great. Maybe I'll leave it right there. That was, my, my intent was that we not keep going further down this path that we're on right now before we talk about it broader. So Matt, that would accomplish that entirely. So I appreciate the suggestion.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify that. On the motion to layover, there's no harm in that, correct? Right now, there's no need to act with any sort of hastiness on this before we understand the zoning better?
Can you get rid of them? No.
Okay.
Provided, something should, our staff at least thinks, thinks something should be cleaned up. We can dispute about what that is, and that's fair enough. We just hope that it'll be, if it drags on too long, then that could become a problem, because as we get into the, the outdoor drinking season, if you will, where people will be doing pop-ups or doing things like that, then people will be wanting licenses, and we want to be prepared for that. And that's, that's part of what you are talking about. So it's a long way of saying, you know, as long as it's in January or, you know, soon, it'll be fine.
Sure. So as long as we can get that workshop, then it sounds like we.
And that's why I made a motion to layover until we get the zoning piece. So the timing is truly in the city's hands.
Okay. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second to layover until the additional zoning changes are ready to come to us. Good. And we'll take the role on motion to layover.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curried seven to layover.
And ordinance 24671 is tied to 670. Am I correct? So we want a motion to lay this one over to the same time, or is this?
That one's different.
Is it?
Yeah.
I think it's.
Substantially different.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't know if we were going to connect them.
This is allowing the clerk more authority to do some peremptory approvals and leaving you guys out of it.
We asked for this.
Yes.
It's very well done and very well. I'll save my comments.
Sorry.
So moved.
Hold on, I got to read. There we go. Technology is great when it works. Ordinance 24671, create chapter four, article three A, pertaining to alcohol, alcohol beverages, issuance of special class B and special class B licenses. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Larson.
Same comment. We asked for this, and it was really well put together, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
With that, I'm going to take the role on 671 before, no, if you'll call the role on 671.
Nichols?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo? Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
We have one new ordinance, no action is anticipated on this this evening. It'll come back for a second reading at the first meeting in January. Ordinance 24672, approve zone change from institutional district to urban mixed-use district for part of 240 Algoma Boulevard, and Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered on that one, so we'll move on to new resolutions. First up, Resolution 24673, this is to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Grand Oshkosh for one Opera House Square capital project. Move it. Discussion. Deputy Mayor's first.
Just clarifying that I will be recusing, because I have a limited but ongoing employment relationship with the Grand Opera House, with the Grand Oshkosh.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? Otherwise, maybe Mark, I should have asked you, or given you a heads-up in advance, but would you be willing to speak a little bit to this for the public? And for those who don't know, the Grand Oshkosh is wanting to do an expansion. That's an understatement. And the city, it is our building, and it's a partnership between us and the Grand Board and the Grand Opera House Incorporated, and we'd like to be good partners and try to work on something quite profound in the, the central city here in downtown. So did I set you up well enough?
You set me up well enough, fine. And Rick's also here. I'm sure Rick would be happy to, to speak on behalf of the, the Grand's board. This is something that the Grand approached us about, about expanding the facility, and after a lot of different iterations, we took a look at the impact of basically excavating underneath the Grand, and because of the contamination from the Gunderson dry cleaners from many years ago, that really would, it would be cost prohibitive to do it that way. So we took a look at a different option to expand it laterally rather than beneath, and taking a look at some drawings, which if you haven't seen, they're, they're wonderful, that basically take the Grand and a parking lot out to Division Street. That would require us to acquire the Gunderson site, which is not an easy task, because the Gunderson site is contaminated, and we'd have to, you know, address that issue. And then also Thompson Photography, which is right there. And since they do council fixtures annually, you want to, you don't want to lose Thompson Photography, but those issues need to get worked out. The biggest issue is the fact that the Grand Opera House Board has agreed to match $5 million on a $10 million project to cover half the cost of the construction. And I think that was a huge part of it. Before it got more elaborate, and when I say elaborate, just more addressing long-term needs for the guests of the Grand, as well as redoing the seats and things like that, you know, the, as we started to look at the scope, we said this is the right scope for the project, and it came to $10 million, and the Grand is committed to, to doing that. The purpose of the MOU is to really memorialize that fundraising effort. The Grand, in order for them to be successful in a fundraising effort, are going to need to go to donors and say, the city's in for this. And so with that knowledge, then they could, then they have a better chance of fundraising, because they know that the city is willing to, to put, put their half of the, of the share of the project in there. So that's the primary reason for the, the MOU. It also spells out some of the procedures that'll go through, and Rick and I went through those in, in pretty good detail, to make sure that we minimize the cost for the Grand as they do their fundraising. Still, they're still going to do the $5 million, but minimize extra costs for bridge loans and things like that, that they might need. So we wanted to make sure we accommodated them as best we could. And so that's kind of the, the basics of it. If Rick or Joe want to chime in on anything else, Joe's the council liaison to the, the Grand's board. And then there's also the next item, and I might as well just mention this one now, the Amendment for the Operating Agreement. This is something that, that I've actually talked to the Grand about for quite some time, and it really goes back to the fundraising effort. Because for them just to have a five-year lease, that doesn't speak well when they're trying to go out and do fundraising, because it's like, you only have a lease for five years? Why would we donate? So the idea behind this is to grant them three extensions, which would take it out to the year 2045. The idea then is the Grand is now committed to maintaining the Grand and operating the Grand for us, and we already have an agreement in place that has an escalator clause to get them funding. It's funded through room tax. That's how we, that's what we designated it, and there's a long story behind that. That actually goes back to city managers. So you just talked to me about 16. This actually goes back nearly 50 years to this discussion. The idea was not to use property tax, and so room tax has been identified as a funding source for that. So I think that's the, the basics of the agreement, but happy to answer any other questions you might have.
No, I appreciate the, I appreciate you telling that story a little bit. I know Councilmember Stevenson wants to speak, so we'll, we'll go to him.
Yeah, no, Mark, you did a great job representing what the MOU is. I mean, this is really kind of memorializing that agreement between the, the city and the Grand. I just wanted to echo a few of your sentiments and really highlight this project. I think it's, I mean, this is a perfect example of a, a public-private partnership. We're getting a building essentially 50% off here. The city owns it, and the, the community is going to be given a really just outstanding performing arts center, really, at the end of the day. I mean, it's going to be a, a very amazing venue in our, the heart of our downtown. So I'm really happy with the work that the city staff and then Opera House staff have done to bring this to this point. I think we all said we wanted to have this MOU out the door before Mark left, so we're not a meeting too short, but we got it done. So I, I want to thank everybody involved at this, and I'm really excited for the future of the Grand here.
Well, I'll echo that, as well as, you know, I wish obviously the, the Grand Board much success in your fundraising efforts. We do quite a bit through, through partnerships, and this is just another example of that strong partnership with the Grand Board. And I'm excited for what this facility can help do into the downtown space in terms of activating more space, as well as drawing more people into our downtown more days of the year. And so it's an exciting time for the Grand and for, for the arts community here in Oshkosh, and I'm excited to see, see where it goes, and I'm looking forward to it. Councilmember Flom, and then we'll take the roll.
Yeah, just to echo that, for the people at home who haven't seen the, the renderings yet, I would highly encourage you to take a look at them. I know they're out in the public now, and they're on this agenda packet as well. It is a truly transformational project for downtown, like Mayor Mughawar said. And so I'm very excited to see this. Hats off to the Grand Board as well, and Councilmember Stevenson for your guys' work on this, and I'm very excited and encouraged to see this happen.
Nothing else? If you'll take the roll on 24673.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Resolution 24674, approve amendment to the Grand Oshkosh lease and operating agreement. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just briefly, I want to thank City Manager Roloff for, for taking care of this and moving this forward. Getting the Grand a longer-term lease agreement between us, like, I think as you pointed out, is instrumental in proving to, you know, artists and the art community that, you know, this board is, is in place, they're going to run this thing for the foreseeable future, and that the agreement and the partnership is strong. And so I appreciate the, the building in those multiple five-year extensions for the, for the operating agreement. With that, if you'll take the roll on 24674.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Resolution 24675, approve combination Class B beer liquor license surrender. Amend current liquor license, business name and premise, and issuance of combination Class B liquor, Class B beer liquor license for X Golf. I have no one registered to speak, but I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion on 675? I see none.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution 24676, appoint interim city manager. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Move it.
Second.
I think I'll go on this one. So this is a bit of an administrative function tonight, just for those listening at home or those reporting on it. At some point, very near in the future, city manager Roloff's last day will occur. We're blessed to have an exceptional leadership command staff here at the city of Oshkosh, and we have an assistant city manager who's, who's in place, and while that role allows Mr. Fitzpatrick to temporarily assume the duties of city manager in the, you know, for brief absences, vacations and such, it's best to administratively make sure that there is an appointed interim city manager, whether it's for a few days, a couple weeks, a month. At this point, that, we don't have a timeline, but it's a good administrative function to make sure that the leader's clearly assigned and defined. So that's the reason for this resolution tonight. I am going to make a amendment to the resolution to include a $1,000 per pay period. Wow, I'm drawing a blank on the.
Salary increase.
Yeah, salary increase while serving as interim city manager. And that will be effective through the, through the interim and come off when the next city manager starts the roll.
Second.
Discussion on that at all?
So if I may, you may, I think the motion was just to appoint. Do you need to include a name as to who you're appointing?
Oh, it's in the resolution.
Is it in the resolution?
Yep, sorry. Yep, in the resolution, be resolved. I'll be very clear, actually. Be resolved that John Fitzpatrick, current Assistant City Manager, Director of Admin Services, will serve as the interim city manager, performing those duties outlined in Chapter 64 of the Wisconsin statutes and in Chapter Two of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. It'll be effective January 4th, and until a new city manager is appointed by the council and assumes the position. So then the additional $1,000 per pay period would be in place until that person assumes that position.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the agenda. It was, it was.
You're okay.
Pretty bare bones.
No, you're good. I had a second on that, I'm pretty sure. Any other discussion? If you'll take the roll on the motion to amend.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
So now we have the motion as amended. If there's any other discussion? If not, you'll take the roll on the 676, as amended.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Resolution 24677, approve specific implementation plan amendment for pylon sign at 1290 South Kohler Street. Plan Commission recommends denial. I have no one registered to speak, but I will take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Esslinger, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, in a nutshell, this is taking the Chili's restaurant sign from its location on the ground into the air and moving it back a few feet, six, eight feet approximately. My understanding that there was a base standard modification already at this location when it started, and I think the only rule that is on Kohler Street with signs is there is no rule. I mean, they're all over the place, at different heights, different levels, and for whatever reason, they made a decision that the sign on the ground is no longer needed or acceptable, or they feel the one is higher. And I do understand that there are, there are criteria for that. I just, I don't know if that criteria that we have really is logical. It's a 25-foot setback, and then this height requirement. I, I think the, the rules should just be kind of logical in that there should be no sight distance problems with signs, and, I mean, I don't know the physics of it. If it gets a certain height and a certain wind, it could blow it down. Obviously, that's a problem. You don't want that. But some of these standards, you try to, you try to apply a standard on one lot, and it doesn't apply to another lot. It's just simple. And so I, I don't see this being a problem for any of the other businesses there. Something they want to do, they're paying for it, and so I'm, I'm, I want to vote to allow this. Mr. Prescott, this was at the Plan Commission. They voted to deny the request to do that. This is coming to us now, obviously. If I'm in favor of this, to allow them to do this, how do we vote on that then? Or do we need to?
So the motion is always in the affirmative? So the, the motion would be, if it's you or anyone else, the motion would be to approve the request, the applicant's request. And then if you're, if you want the sign, you would vote yes. If you don't want the sign, you would vote no.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. And just to clarify, a couple of things from Plan Commission on Tuesday. This is a, this is a relatively new installation of a sign. I asked staff, had they wanted this base standard modification at the outset, what would the response be? And my understanding was that they would have been able to configure the parking lot to put the sign where code requires. I, I agree with Mr. Esslinger that, that I'm not sure, you know, what the, what the I agree with Mr. Esslinger that I'm not sure what the physics are around sign heights or sign sizes. But I do know this doesn't fall within our code. And also, to Mr. Esslinger's point, it is a mess over there. And I think the goal of our code in this instance, and there are times I disagree with our code too, so I'm not going to say this, I'm always going to agree with the code. But in this instance, it's to have some uniformity and to build towards that. So on last Tuesday at Plan Commission, I voted to deny this, and I'll be voting to deny it again tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Flom?
So this one, I kind of went back and forth with. I know that council typically has, speaking frankly, larger things to worry about than just signs. However, typically, for me, about signage, I normally agree with Mr. Esslinger that this is just, anything goes, especially in this part of town. However, speaking to Mr. Nichols' point of view and others, we have a policy. And the policy was instituted in 2017. And the question is, for other people that have built after 2017, and if we give an exception for this specific site, is it basically same way bother having a policy at all? So that's where I fall on this. Very much, I don't like telling businesses what to do. However, if there has been a policy in place, this is something that I am going to go along with the Planning Commission on.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I was lucky enough this last summer to do some traveling to some places that don't have good codes and ordinances. And I sent Joe a text actually from plenty, many of the places I travel to that said, well, I understand why we have them now. And people that want to complain about not having, or complain about our inspections should go to places that don't have them. I'll be voting to deny this. I think that it is important that we set a standard and then we stick to it. I know that everything out there is going to be conforming because it was made before standards, or there are different BSMs that are allowed. I think staff has done a good job of trying to enforce the standard that has set since 2017. So I'll be supporting to, or I'll be voting to deny the modification.
Any other comments? I want to thank council, because I appreciate all those comments and I agree with, I think, everything, which is kind of refreshing, actually. You're not wrong, and that's okay. The part for me, had this been requested, I think the point was, had this been requested during the original construction phase, it could have been accommodated in some way. And now we're at a spot where it's difficult, if not impossible, possibly, not, nothing's impossible, but exceptionally difficult to comply. And to their point of, we have rules in place, we should try to follow those rules to moving into the future. That's why I'm also going to be in support of denying, denying this request. Councilmember Stevenson?
I can't be a zoning guy and be the only one who doesn't talk about this. So I believe in enforcing our zoning code and the rule of law in this case. I also just want to point out that I do like to be business friendly. I know we've given base standard modifications before for other businesses, but typically, when we're offering those BSMs, we're kind of getting something in return. In this case, it would just be allowing them to move their sign to not, not follow our code and not get anything in return. Either way, I would like them to follow our existing code, but I just wanted to point out that when traditionally we've offered these base standard modifications, we've gotten more landscaping, we've gotten higher quality facade, we've gotten extra green space, things like that. It's usually kind of a give and take, and that's not the case in this one, so.
Councilmember Larson?
Just because everybody else has something to say, I'm torn on this as well, and I agree with everybody up here as well. Signs is a thing that I have talked a lot about up here when I was over there, as you all know. I'm just stuck on the fact that had they asked for this in the first place, we would have found a way to do it. And now that they didn't, we are saying we can't. So I'm reluctantly a yes. I agree with Paul on this, that we should find a way to do it, but I understand all the reasons that we can't also. And I get everything everybody's saying, but I'm a yes at this point in the hopes that we can find a way to do it.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, sorry, just a clarifying question for Kelly. So if we deny this today, and they were to bring us a different proposal of how to put this sign into the air, that would again be considered by Plan Commission and brought before this council?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to confirm that piece. Thanks.
All right. No other comments? If you'll take the role on 24677, remembering a yes is to allow and a no is to not.
Nichols?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
No.
Buellow?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Mugawar?
No.
That lost, five, two, or two, five, lost.
Resolution 24678, this is approved professional service agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc. for the 2025 property assessment reevaluation in the amount of $285,000. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Nichols?
I just want to thank staff for the memo that was included with this one. This is another one where I laid over and asked for a memo. I think that this arms us with the ability to speak to what's going on intelligently, both with the last assessment and this one. And anybody that is watching this at home, I encourage you to look at this agenda item and the memo contained in it. And you'll learn a lot about what we're doing and why, and why this process is going to be better. So thanks, staff, for putting that together and delaying this a bit.
Well said. I see nothing else. Take the role in 24678.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
Resolution 24679, approve professional service agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants, Inc. for three-year annual maintenance for the commercial assessment service in the amount of $202,500. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The clerk will please take the role.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
I promise you only got to listen to me talk a few more times. Resolution 24680, amend Resolution 24-413, grant to ARPA funding for development of a multi-shift child daycare facility. Approve city grant application to WEDC and approve city funded development grant and development agreement with the Corridor Development LLC and Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development, Inc., all in relation to the corridor development to be located in the 600 blocks of Jefferson Avenue and North Main Street. I have no one registered.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to say that in addition to the normal amount of reading I got to do on this, I was lucky enough that my 15-year-old son writes for the West newspaper and did an article on this as well. So quick plug for him, but it was a great project before he wrote it, about it, and it was a great project after he wrote about it, and I can't support this enough.
Mr. Stevenson?
I'd like to make a little plug for this project, too. This project is, I think, getting a little bigger than just Oshkosh right now. I'm in other communities a lot, talking about economic development, talking about the issues with daycare and affordable housing. And this is kind of being pointed to as a best practice, as an example of how to get both affordable housing and affordable daycare in your community. So I really just kind of want to mention that, that Oshkosh is kind of on the map for this project right now. So I'm really excited about it.
Good. I see no other buttons. If you'll take the role in 24680.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
Resolution 24681, approve land acquisition of 1226 Oshkosh Ave, 1236 Oshkosh Ave vacant lots previously known at 1232 Oshkosh Ave and 1240 Oshkosh Ave. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Nichols?
This came through Plan Commission and had overwhelmingly positive comments that we were acquiring these buildings and this land. I just want to mention that this is the Sawyer 21 intersection and will be helped to fix it. And that's the phrase I'm going to use there, because it's a mess. So I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm excited for us to actually move forward with that project.
If there's nothing else, take the role on 24681.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
Resolution 24682, approve land acquisition for a 5.5-acre portion of 3483 Jackson Street for development of workforce housing. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nichols beat Mr. Flom to the button, so we'll go Nichols, Flom.
Thanks. So this also came before Plan Commission last week, and I think there are more people to speak on this item than I've seen since I've been on Plan Commission. What we're doing here, if you don't know, is we're acquiring a piece of land next to another piece of land that we've already acquired, and that is to add workforce housing lots to a neighborhood that's existing already. There's some misinformation out there related to what we're doing and why. There's some questions about why is the city getting involved with buying land that a developer would typically buy before they develop? The way that I've talked to Kelly about this is if you build it, they will come approach, where we're going to actually do some plating and we're going to put in some infrastructure. And then actually, I have a design book with architectural design, so that we can actually build these things pretty quickly. I've heard from all of the residents, I think, since they left Plan Commission last Tuesday. And what I've explained to them is, they have concerns. And they've asked me, if you were building this next to your house, what would you say? And I said, I would have the same concerns and the same questions that you have, but the fact that you're talking to me means our process of representative government is working. So I think there's a lot of work to be done here. The plat that you see in the resolution is not set in stone. That's a design, it's a recommendation, maybe. That might be too strong of a word. But there's a lot of work to be done here. Something I recommended to Sarah and Brian at Plan Commission last week was that we expand kind of our normal neighborhood radius for issuing notices of neighborhood meetings, just because people are very involved in this. I'll also say Sarah and Brian did a great job in explaining what this is and what it's not. So something else I would encourage staff to do, we had affordable housing a little bit earlier, we talked about that. This is workforce housing. Those are terms that are used interchangeably, but they're not interchangeable. So I think we need to do a better job of communicating that to people to avoid some of the misinformation. But anyway, I'd encourage the staff continuing to march down this path, and I'm excited about it. But I think that we need to communicate, because this is unique and different from what we typically do. Thanks.
Councilmember Flom, followed by Councilmember Stevenson?
Thank you, and I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission has done in regards to reaching out to the neighborhoods in this proposal. One of the things that I'm very, very focused in on is housing and the continuum of housing in the city. And we just had a discussion about affordable housing. And now for workforce housing, these are single-family homes. In the city of Oshkosh, we built very, very few single-family homes in 2023. I think the number was around 12. I know for sure it was under 20. So that should keep everybody up here at night that we're not building single-family homes. And this is something, I think, an opportunity in a landlocked city that we can actually go ahead and build in this location. So I'm excited for this. I would encourage more dialogue between the city and the current residents there, and I'm excited to get this going, and this is the first step in that direction. So, thank you.
I don't have a ton to add. I do, I will echo sentiments from both my fellow council members that I'm excited about this project. Oshkosh very much needs housing. Councilmember Flom is exactly right. We have done a better job in our multifamily sector than our single-family sector. We have not grown our single-family units as quickly as those multifamily ones. And change and growth is normal. Neighborhoods throughout the city are going to experience things like this, whether it's done by the city or done by a private developer. And to tag off a little bit of what DJ said, workforce housing is housing for people who are working. So I mean, it is literally, people often will say, you make housing for low income and high income, nobody in the middle. This is the people in the middle. This is your everyday person who has a job, is going to buy this house. So I mean, we're really trying to make it affordable for the average Oshkosh citizen right here. So I really do feel that these houses will conform to the neighborhood, they'll be a boon to our city, and they'll really help our housing needs in general, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Just to whittle it down even more, workforce housing is 80% to 120% of median income. So that's really where the target for this is. And I just wanted to put the numbers on there for anybody that was out there watching and stuff like that. And to answer one of the questions that I know that came to Planning Commission is why don't we just let the developers develop if they're going to? Well, it's cost prohibitive for people to come in here and develop this for workforce housing market. It's just with the cost of, cost of development, the cost of supplies, all that, it has to be something where the city provides a path forward for private developers to do that. And that's really what we're doing here. And that's a response to the council giving that direction to do that. So I very much support this. I think that, thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you to Councilmember Nichols for all the work that you're doing with the neighborhood there. If you need any help, you know, we can definitely all pitch in there as well. But just want to say thank you and make those clarifying points.
All right. If there's nothing else, take the role on 24682.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
Just a few more here. 24-683, approved fee schedule for sanitary sewer use charges. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So Attorney Prescott?
Just a clarification, that what you're approving is in the packet tonight. So there was a modification from what was sent out for everyone to see last Friday. So, and this is, this reflects, I believe, a slight reduction from the rates that went out on Friday. So just so everyone knows what they're voting on.
It only affects the interim rates. All the other ones are still good.
If there's no comments, you'll take the role on 24683.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
Resolution 24684, approve fee schedule for storm water use charges. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Please take the role in 24684.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flom?
Aye.
Buellow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Period seven?
24-685, approve 2025 fees and charges schedule. Take a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Larson?
I just wanted to thank staff for including the reserve liquor license dollar amount in there. That's a thing that didn't get trumpet enough the last time that we gained them, because we now have them. So the more we can tell people that we have those, the better off we are, because we have them.
I did have a question.
Councilmember Stevenson?
We had, and I'm trying to pull up the exact fee, so we had originally a fee that was not applicable for, I believe it was lead testing, and then now we have a fee for it. Is that just a new service we're providing?
I'm going to have to let Mr. Godey answer that question. And I appreciate, you know, Chris, we wanted to memorialize those, even though they're set by statute.
Yep.
Council can't amend those reserve license fees, but they're there for everybody to see. I gave Stephen enough time.
You did, thank you. Good evening. So the new fee is, as everyone knows, we mailed out those 11,000 letters as part of the lead and copper rule revision. One of those requirements in the revision was that the city has to offer testing for lead in instances where the home has a lead service line. At this point in time, the city, it costs the city, we have to hire an outside lab to do it, it's $47 for the cost of that lab test and $25 per box we ship there. We can put multiple in the box. So we estimated that it would take about three, we could probably get three coordinated at a time to get sent up in a reasonable amount of time and done. So we're just trying to recoup our costs for doing that for the lead tests that we're now required to offer to residents to be available. It is more economical to find a local company to do it, and those numbers and names were in the letter.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, if you'll take the roll on 24685.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Floem?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7.
Last resolution of the evening, 24686, approve ARPA funds for 2024 projects in lieu of issuing debt. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Take the roll on 24686.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Floem?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Curate 7.
We have council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. First up, discussion, direction to city manager, we have on here the West 7th Avenue update. I know there was an email that went out very recently on that. Any further updates?
In the outstanding issues, you know, we have had, we've met with a consultant, and they're submitting a proposal to us, and we expect that they'll start the work in January. So that's the latest. And Mr. Girrock will continue to send out those weekly notices to get feedback. And there was one piece of feedback that Justin had said that it seemed like the frequency had gone down, and somebody said, well, not for me. So it was good to hear that, because we need to know all of these issues, not just one. And we're not just looking for the ones that are the most positive. It's just, we need to know all of it, because, you know, as this consultant looks at those things, they're going to try to figure out why here and not there type of thing. So the more we keep hearing from folks, the better.
Sure. Sounds good. Future agenda items, meetings and workshops, we still have on here Oshkosh Air Humane Society presentation from them when, when they can, they will. I think Councilmember Esslinger, you go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did have a chance to talk with them, and they will be at the next meeting, so the first meeting in January, they'll be here.
Okay.
So just put as a presentation on the front end, Paul?
Yeah. Okay.
If, Mark, if you could have maybe your office, maybe Kami could reach out to, if maybe Mr. Esslinger has the specific contact, or at least someone from their office, just to, that way they have, if they have any materials they want to give us, we can help coordinate that in advance.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Just want to give me the name.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. And this might be one where we're just looking for heads to nod. I don't know if I'll get them, but there was, there was an email that was sent a couple days ago from a local business owner who's taking it upon himself to put together a pamphlet